Good afternoon. My name is Virginia Sanz de Vala and I'm the coordinator of student development here at TSC. I'd like to start by welcoming everybody to the open forum. And before we get started, we'd like to announce some special guests we have in the crowd. So we'd like to welcome Mrs. Adela Garza, Chair for the Board of Trustees. Mr. Trey Mendez, Vice Chair for the Board of Trustees. Mr. Ruben Herrera, Secretary for the TSC Board of Trustees. And Dr. Jesús Roberto Rodríguez, TSC President. Thank you all for joining us. At this time, I'd go, I'd like to go ahead and introduce our Student Government Association President, Ms. Cristo Rinaga. Let's give her a round of applause.
Good afternoon. My name is Cristo Rinaga and I'm the Student Government Association President and I will serve as the moderator for the forum. On behalf of the Student Government Association, we would like to welcome you to the TSC trustee candidates' open forum. We would like to thank all the candidates for taking their time to speak to our TSC family and community. In attendance running for TSC Place 6, we have J.J. De Leon Jr., Dr. Ronaldo Garcia, and Carlos Rios. And for TSC Place 7, running unopposed, we have Eva Alejandro. Before we begin the forum, we ask all candidates adhere to the forum's guidelines. Each candidate will be given three minutes for an opening statement at the beginning of the forum. We ask that you wait to be called upon. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond to questions from the audience. Candidates will hear a single bell during their response indicating there's 15 seconds left. Candidates will hear a double bell during their response indicating their time has expired. Each candidate will be given two minutes for a closing statement at the end of the forum. Again, we ask that you wait to be called upon. Without further ado, I would like to welcome our first candidate, Eva Alejandro, for her opening statement.
First of all, thank you for having us here, for this opportunity to share what we believe in and what we are committed to. I come from a very small town, rural town, but education has always been my passion. I have been an educator for 47 years in different aspects, I guess, of education, starting with public school. Taught in San Antonio, taught in Brownsville, then was given the opportunity to work here at the, at the college, Texas Southmost College, back in 1977. I was commissioned to develop and implement the Child Care and Development Program, which still exists and I'm very proud. After that, I was a stay-home mom for a couple of years and then had the opportunity to start working with the University of Texas, well, back then it was Pan American Brownsville. And then, then it became UTB. Was at UTB for 20 years, started supervising student teachers and worked into the classroom and taught almost every education class. Of course, my forte is early childhood education. But while there, got to know the teacher alternative certification programs. After 20 years at UTB, I left and did consultant work for several years and traveled the state and the nation doing consultant work, of course, in education all along. Then I was given an opportunity to open a teacher certification program. It's an alternative teacher certification program, which I have owned and managed for the last 16 years. Over the course of the 16 years, we've certified probably anywhere from 25,000 to 3,000 teachers. While being an owner of A Step, Alternative South Texas Educative Program, we have seen many changes with curriculum, with the state, of course, the agency have may, have been able to maintain and, and I guess survive all the changes that TEA has mandated for us. We've been able to stay with the, with the times because I believe that our focus is and will always be students. So therefore, we've managed to change our training, always keeping the students in mind, and I think we've been very successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alejandro. Our next candidate is Mr. J.J. De Leon Jr.
Good afternoon. I have to apologize for my voice. If it goes, I'll try to adjust. I have walking pneumonia. Good afternoon, students, faculty and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to share this forum with my constituents. A little bit about me, I've been in the field of education for 24 years. I started from the bottom all the way to the top. I have an associate's, a bachelor's degree and a master's degree in education. I think I want to be the leader, the torches of the college community. I want to be able to make sure that students have a clear educational pathway. I am a six, eight siblings in my family. I graduated from TSC and I just, I want to be able to offer what I think it's the, for me, something to my community. I've lived here for my whole entire life. My mother is my biggest supporter. She's here in the audience. This is my third endeavor to seek a seat at the TSC Board. With your vote, I hope to achieve that. I will continue to support TSC. I think TSC is moving in the right direction. There is growth to be done at TSC and I think I'm the right choice for that. More than that said, I am here to serve the students. Independent candidate, I don't, I'm not a born politician, but I'm here to serve you, the students and the community of this great city of Brownsville. I also committed to making sure that low educational cost is always effective and that every opportunity is given to every student. We need to tap into our local industries and make sure that our students are the first choice to any job placement here in Brownsville. And with that said, I appreciate the time that you're giving me. Thank you for having me here.
Thank you, Mr. De Leon. Our next candidate is Dr. Ronaldo Garcia.
Good evening. Good afternoon, rather. Thank you for the invite, for this forum, and I'm glad to be here to discuss the issues. And I just want to start by saying that I am a product of TSC. I took my pre-dental requirements here before I went to dental school and I can see the value of a community college to help anybody to get started in the right direction in a community college. So I know the value of it. In the late 80s and early 90s, I was elected to the Board of Trustees of BISD. I served in the Board of Trustees of BISD for six years. In 87, 88, I was Board President of BISD. And I learned a lot of how to become a board member and how to recognize the duties between a board member and the duties of the administration. And that's one of the hardest things that board members have, separating the duties of the administration and the duties of the board member. During the split of TSC from UTB, I was asked, they were needing to search for precedent, college precedent, and I was asked to serve in the screening committee where we screen over 50 candidates for precedent. And after that was done, there were two positions open for TSC and I was asked again to run because of my previous experience on the boards. So after discussing this with my wife to make sure she approved, I decided to go ahead and run and fortunately I was successful. And I've been serving there for the last six years. And like I say, I understand the value of the college and I want to have good experience and professional leadership at the college, at the board level for the college so we can continue to lead our students to successful and rewarding careers.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia. Our last candidate, our last candidate is Mr. Carlos Rios.
Good afternoon. Why did I, why, why did I decide to run for the Texas Southmost College? I am young, I have a lot to learn, but I'm willing to accept that. I come from a small, from a small family, from a small town in, in Mexico. I was born in the United States, luckily, thanks to God. I, there's a lot of things I want to focus on, but one of the things I do want to mention is the fact that as a young, as a young person, I understand the struggles and the obstacles that, that everyone is facing as students. I understand the problems such as the crippling debt, the loans that we're able or unable to get when it comes to, towards the financial aid, how much is given per household income and depending on that, how many of this, of the, of the people living in that household are the source income for their family. So you get, you get your, you receive financial aid, but a lot of times here in our community, being the highest in poverty rate and lowest in education, it, it has a big toll on our community. I decided to run for the TSC Board because I believe education is the root of the problem. If we focus on education, we can, if we focus on tailoring educational programs to the job market that we have, then we could, we could, we can stop outsourcing jobs. What some entities have been doing is they hire, they hire companies from outside of, of the county of Brownsville. And I ask, why? Why does that happen? I received the same answer. It is because our people aren't qualified as students. We're not qualified, not educated. And so when the companies come down and they look at, at the range of the people who are qualified or educated, they see the loan, the low number that we have and for that reason, they decide not to, not to establish their corporation here. I want to focus on the technical and vocational programs that we have here at TSC. I want to strengthen those programs and want to ensure that we have more, not only such as programs such as plumbing, electrician, welding, the automotive shop, which I went to recently. Mr. Udesti was telling me that they need a new sign. We don't have a health clinic here at TSC. We need a health clinic.
Thank you.
I can keep on going.
Thank you, Mr. Rios. Thank you to all the candidates for your opening statements. I would now like to begin the Q and A portion of our program by asking our first question on behalf of the Student Government Association. If elected, how would your position impact students at TSC? And we'll be alternating with the responses to the questions, starting with J.J. De Leon.
Can you repeat the question? I'm sorry?
Yes. If elected, how would your position impact students at TSC?
If elected? How would I what?
How would your position impact students at TSC?
Okay, cool. And if I, if elected, I think the validity of this community for every student is very important. I want to make sure that we are on the right path with all these industries coming into our community, that you are given the opportunity to be successful in your career path. I think it's very important that if we have a vision in where we want to put our students, that we will have the passion of putting to in the, in the industry that you best will be successful in. So that's what I would do if I was to be elected. I would work making sure that your career path is the number one choice. Thank you.
Thank you for your response. The next one will be Dr. Ronaldo Garcia with the same question. If elected, how would your position impact students?
Can you repeat it a little slower? You go too fast and, you know, I'm a little old.
Yes, of course. My apologies. If elected, how would your position impact students at TSC?
How would our position?
If elected, how would your position impact students at TSC?
If you're elected, how would your position impact TSC?
Oh, my position will impact, okay, I get you now. Thank you. My position will impact the students from my past experience, that I know the value of a community college, I know the value of one-to-one teaching and instruction, and it has been proven that students that begin a community, that begin their careers in a community college have more success finishing their careers than the ones that start at the university level. So it's highly impactful because it had that impact on me. After I graduated from high school, two years here, in four years I was out of dental school. You have to, of course, I was a full-time student and right now, that's not the case. Right now, a lot of students have to work unfortunately and they have to split our time between work and studies and it takes them long to finish. Education is a, is one you have to have full commitment. You need to put 100% of the time in it to do it right, while you're still young. If you stretch it out, the longer you go, the less chances of you for success are. You have to kind of put things aside for a couple of years, hit it hard for two years with the aid that they give you, and then you should be able to complete everything in the required time in two years. There's no reason why not, unless you're a part-time student and like I say, unfortunately, that's the case here, but a lot of, about 80% of our students are getting aid. So, but that's a deterrent, the fact that they have to wait too long to get going. So you have to do it early and hit it hard and full-time. Part-time, I don't go along with that. And that's my advice to the students, to think about that.
Thank you for your response. Our next candidate to respond is Carlos Rios.
If elected, to the, if given the opportunity to be elected to the TSC Board, what I feel I can bring to the table is not only new ideas, innovative ideas, ideas from a younger generation, but more than anything, a relationship with the students. I feel we can relate to each other in the sense that we're around the same generation. Maybe y'all don't use Facebook, but we're on Twitter, Instagram, Snapchat, one way or another. I'm sure you've heard about me and if not, I'm not doing a great job. But apart from that, I want to be the voice of the students. I want to ensure such like Cristo Rinaga, the president for the SGA, that we have a collaborative effort in ensuring the success of the, of Tech, of the Texas Southmost College, not only with our trustees who are doing a great job, but what I can contribute is bringing in new ideas. And not only that, I want to focus on ensuring that we have mentorship and apprenticeships. We have things such as the All-In Program with Ms., which Ms. Diana Rodríguez is, is part of here at the Texas Southmost College. They ensure that students can find employment, employment as students or when they're close to graduating. I think the All-In Program is doing a great job at that. And as, as Dr. Garcia mentioned, yes, a lot of the stu, a lot of the students we have are part-time students. And why is that? I believe that, like I mentioned, that is because we live in the highest poverty level of area and students need to support their families as well. So we need to get, understand that and see how we can fix that.
Thank you for your, thank you for your response. The last candidate to respond will be Eva Alejandro.
I am a product also of a, of a community college. And I feel that the foundation that we set or that we get as college students, community college students, is very important. It's the foundation, it's the base for everything that we do. But not everyone is, is seeking a four-year degree and I'm all for that. And, but I think that what many people don't know is that we can start with an associate's degree and work our way up to get certified in a public classroom. Being in teacher certification, we have found out or we know that a person with an associate's degree can gain experience and then experience will substitute your educational career or your, your years of college work. We've, have certified people that have an associate's degree and become educators in our public schools because they need cosmetology people, they need mechanics, they need body work, people that do body work. And so with, with so many years' experience, you can get into this school system and then end up with teacher certification. So I think many people don't know that. What we need to do is work with our counselors in middle school and high school so that our students can identify career paths early in life and work towards that. So not to discourage students that, that they can't become a professional and it can be done, you know, with all the teacher retirement benefits and, and everything else that goes with it. Thank you.
Thank you for your response.
I have a question. Can we actually respond to some of these comments or we can't?
Due to time, I believe we're going to go ahead and move on with the other questions.
Okay.
But if we do have time in the end, I'm pretty sure you can feel free to address it.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Okay, at this moment, I would now like to begin the Q and A portion, which I just did, and I will now open it up to the community and to the TSC family. If you guys have a question, feel free to approach the mics.
I have a question and I don't need a mic. I am a proud graduate of Texas Southmost College and Texas Southmost prepared me. From here, I went to the most prestigious university in the nation, San Luis Obispo State. I acquired various master's degrees. TSC prepared me. Now, the area that needs to be addressed is the relationship between TSD and BISD. I am a veteran teacher of 37 years of experience and as of yet, I have not heard Texas Southmost College mentioned. Every one of my seniors has been pulled out of class and all of their registration forms have been completed at my campus. What I want to know, when are we going to initiate that program for TSC? We need to confront these seniors and tell them what programs are available on this campus. They don't know. You know, I, I talked to them, hey, how about TSC? TSC? They, they don't, they, they don't know of the programs that exist. So my suggestion is, let's emulate what the university is doing. They have students that come, they pull out the seniors, they fill out their paperwork and when they graduate, they're ready to attend the university. I think that's an area that needs to be addressed and I, I only feel that it will improve the quality of students that are coming to TSC. Thank you.
Okay, the first person to address this question, since we're alternating, is Dr. Ronaldo Garcia.
I think that our president's already working with the BISDs, all the ISDs actually, to try to coordinate things. Right now, it's mostly with a dual enrollment program, but I think that word gets around to the rest of the students and he gets in good contact with the principals or with the superintendents of the districts and also even with the principal level. So we are making an effort on that one already. It's probably not as effective as it should be, like you would like, Mr. Mata, but that's a very good question and you've mentioned that to me before. And I think that we're on the right track, we just need to make a little bit more effort in doing exactly what you said.
Thank you. The next candidate would be Mr. Carlos Rios.
Mr. Mata, thank you for your question. I, I do believe that we need a strong relationship between BISD and TSC, not only BISD, Los Fresnos, and Portis Sibyl, South Padre Island, various other school districts. Now, the way I feel we can strengthen those relationships is not only by talking to the principals, but the teachers, hearing out what they need and hearing out the students. As I remember high school, about, let's say, what, eight years ago, around there, and the dual enrollment program came out. Yes, I was part of the dual enrollment program. Now, where a lot of students made, made available, were given the opportunity where they made available, where they made aware that the program was available? No, they weren't. And that is a big problem. I, I see not, I, there, there has been efforts, I agree, but I believe we need to strengthen those efforts with, with every ISD and ensure that we keep a strong communication between TSC and all the ISDs, all the schools, especially with the teachers and the administrative office. And ensure that we have somebody on the TSC Board that can overlook the, how the relationship is going and maintain the relationship and strengthen the relationship. So I do thank you for your question, but I do believe that one of the biggest ways to do that is by giving internships and apprenticeships.
Thank you. Our next candidate will be Ms. Eva Alejandro.
I think this is what I alluded to in my previous statement, is that we do need to work with middle school and high school counselors and principals and teachers in, in, in allowing or letting the students know what is available. And not only that, but I think we also need to start surveying students because we need to meet their needs. There might be programs that are available that students have no idea that they can get into and, and if that's the case, then we need to look at our curriculums and then, or bring in new programs. For example, some people are into the graffiti and that means that they, there is artwork that, there, okay? And I've seen it in the high schools. And so that's an avenue that maybe we need to pursue, that instead of kids putting out graffiti, that they can all do something great with it, you know, as far as automotive or in some of the other areas. But I think that, yes, I know that work has been started, but I think we need to strengthen those relationships with the districts and, and, and work with the counselors and, and providing resources for these counselors so that they know and have the information for the students. Thank you, Mr. Mata.
Thank you. Our last candidate to respond will be Dr. Ronaldo Garcia. Oh, I'm sorry. J.J. De Leon, yes.
Mr. Mata, if you looked at my bio, I used to be a student that used to work for Americor. I used to go to the high schools, actually, I would used to be stationed at Porter to recruit high school students. I, I can't agree with you more. I think there needs to be accountability between the school, the local school district as it also needs to be with TSC in recruiting students to come to a community college. But I think that it is very important to educate our students on career pathways. I mean, there's so many things coming to Brownsville that are allowing opportunities for many students who are not seeking a four college year degree. So I, I'm a stepping stone to that, in particular, to recruiting students because we need to also build on not only traditional but non-traditional students. I was one of those students. I didn't come here full-time, but I was still successful in graduating and getting a bachelor's and a master's degree. We have, we have to understand that some of our culture, we have to support some of our family, but education is never far away and it doesn't have to be full-time. It can be part-time. As a coordinator for BISD, you know, we work with, as we're students, we make sure that they, our ultimate goal is that they graduate high school. And so I want to be that bridge to build to recruit students to come to TSC, not only with BISD, sir, but with all our local community college, I mean, districts. Thank you for your question.
Thank you. Does anybody have another question that they'd like to ask? Can you go ahead and step up to the mic, please?
Okay. How do you plan to work with media? This is for all the candidates.
We will go ahead and start the question with Mr. Carlos Rios.
How do we plan to work with media? Okay, so recently I was driving and I heard a commercial for TSC, which I think is great. I think we're living in an era where technology is very important and we need to ensure that we're making aware of the programs that we offer at TSC. We're making people aware of the benefits of the benefits of getting a vocational technical training through all sources of media. I'm not sure if I'm answering your question, though.
I'm a news reporter, I'm sorry.
Through news reporters?
Yeah.
Well, okay. Well, doing that, doing so, I hope that we can, I can get your information, your contact information, your colleagues, anybody's contact information, that way whenever we have events, which I encourage that we have more, I propose that we have more events, we can contact you guys, and you guys can come and cover these types of events. It's important for the media to let the community know that we, as the only community college in the southern region of Texas, well, the county, it's important that the media allows our people, our community, to know what TSC is doing, what programs we have, what events are being hosted, and that's really something that needs to be 50/50. We need to ensure that we have those programs, we need to ensure that we have the events, and at the same time, from your part, we need to ensure that you're attending these events, you're covering these events, and you're writing about these programs as well.
Thank you. Our next candidate to respond will be Ms. Eva Alejandro.
This is my first run as a public servant, so I don't know if there's protocol in place, and so I would have to check that out. But yes, I think that we, the university, the college would have nothing to hide, and I think that the more coverage that the college gets as far as the programs that are offered, that it can't go anywhere but up, you know, so I think that the media sometimes, you know, well, we need to work with the media, so therefore, you know, I don't see any problem.
Thank you. Next will be Mr. J.J. De Leon.
I would use the media for our benefit. I think it's important that if we get free advertising from you, then absolutely, we would definitely promote TSC to be our number one choice for a community college. So the doors are open, at least for me as a board member, to let the media come in and actually inform our community about what we offer here locally. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last candidate will be Dr. Renaldo Garcia.
I think our marketing department does a good job in trying to mix our exposure around, and we can tell by enrollment figures, they keep increasing, and I think the media is doing that very well. However, when it comes to reporters, is that what you're referring, yeah, I don't know when the, the reporters are invited to be in our meetings, all our meetings and all our workshops, everything, they're always invited, and I don't know, I don't know who's in the media, so I don't know if they've been there or not, but they need to be, and after the meeting, the board members are more than willing to help answer any questions that you might have of what transpired during the meeting, because we need to be open to the public, we need to be just, not any secrets, we need to let the public know what the TSC is doing, and we're doing wonderful things, they need to be out there, and they need to be advertised or reported on in the paper. So, do you attend the board meetings?
I attend it sometimes.
You have some, okay. So now, I would encourage them to do that, and even TV, whoever, but no, we have no problem with that, and we encourage that, yes.
Thank you. I will now open it back up to the floor if you have any questions.
Hi, my name is Diana, and my question is, do you plan to keep TSC focused on technical programs and associates, or will we one day move towards a bachelor's program?
Okay, and to start this, we will go ahead and start with Ms. Eva Alejandro.
Most definitely. Okay, I think that, like I stated before, not everyone is four-year material, and there's nothing wrong with that, okay? I think that a person can work their way up. Sometimes, students, because I've dealt with all levels of students, they need to find their niche, and when you're 17, 18 years old, you still don't know what you want to do. And so I think that by attending a college, a community college, that we find what career we really want to take. Sometimes, we think we know, but then that may change. So, so yes, I think it's all about students, it's about finding those course offerings that work for our students, because we know that our students, in most cases, work, have other financial burdens that they need to deal with, and so, yes, definitely.
Thank you. Our next candidate to respond will be Mr. J.J. De Leon.
My model is actually to continue the TSC legacy, so most definitely. I think it's a huge stepping stone. Building TSC to become what it used to be is very important to me, that's one of my top priorities. So offering technical programs, I mean, absolutely, that's why we need to tap into our local industries to build a better future for TSC and for all of our students that come to TSC. So definitely, yes.
Thank you. Our next candidate to respond will be Dr. Renaldo Garcia.
Community colleges are supposed to be factories for technology and the workforce. We are mainly focused right now on technology and careers for our students that go two years. However, we also are open to baccalaureates. I started my degree as a dentist at the TSC, and then we're also doing technical. So technical is heavily emphasized, but we also have people that want to be engineers, doctors, lawyers. We're open. I mean, it's not just technical, some people think communities are just for technical. The universities don't provide any workforce people. We do, we're the ones that do that. We're the workforce factory of the nation and of our future, because of our production and things like that, we need to hire, and this is what we do. So no, we're both, we're not just concentrating on mechanical or electrical and things like that. Like I say, we have people that go to engineering, we have a strong partnership with the Texas A&amp;M Engineering Department, and other, we have a lot of MOUs with different universities. So from here, you can take off and go to there, just like I did, in my experience.
Thank you. Our last candidate to respond will be Mr. Carlos Rios.
Both. I believe that TSC has been the foundation for many of us to continue on to, whether we want to get a bachelor's in a certain area or a master's in a certain area, but I do believe as well that we need to focus on vocational and technical jobs, because our community is largely based on those types of job requirements. The workforce needs people with certifications or skills that are technical or vocational. TSC has been the foundation for many people, and I seek for it to continue being the foundation for many people to get a bachelor's or master's. Now, at TSC, for 15 credits, it's a total for around $1,950 at TSC for 15 credits. Now, at UTRGV, for three credits, it's about $1,000. So I think TSC is doing a great job with the prices that we're offering. Yes, they can be lower, but we can work, I can work with the board to find ways to ensure how we can do that, such as the ITIC building, different things where we can work on. But to answer your question, short and simple, both, both are very important. Thank you.
Thank you all for your responses, and we'll move on to this side now for our next question.
Oh, okay, thanks. Hello, I'm a part-time student. It's very difficult for me to go full-time. I am also not the smartest in the bunch, I get Cs and Bs. A lot of the scholarships that are offered are for A-students. It's very difficult for, sometimes for students of my caliber to find scholarships that are offered in different universities, not only locally but nationally. How would you better that, to be able to offer scholarships for students that may not have the best grades but would like to graduate?
Okay, and for this question, we will go ahead and start with Dr. Renaldo Garcia.
I think one of the answers for you is to probably look into our foundation scholarships that we have. We have a foundation fund that we kind of lost for a while, but we regained, and that program is not necessarily a Pell Grant type of scholarships, but scholarships for students in you particularly need, that are not in the best category academically, but yet you still need some help. And I think that's the one that needs to be tapped on, and you need to get together with the college president and see what's the best avenue for you to go, and see how to apply for a scholarship from the TSC Foundation. That's my advice to you.
Thank you. Our next candidate to respond will be Mr. Carlos Rios.
Regarding your concern, I completely understand what you mean. You are part of a majority of the students who have to work to sustain their family, who are forced to be part-time students, and yes, a part-time students, it is very rare that a part-time student get, obtain a Pell Grant. Now, recently, we have a foundation for TSC in which it's spearheaded by Dr. Tara Rios, a dentist as well, and she used to be a congresswoman. And I believe it was around November or September where she donated over $200,000 in scholarships, and I want to work with our TSC board members to ensure how that money is being used or given to scholarships for students such as yourself, and I believe it's about 80% of our students that are part-time and are struggling with the same issues.
Thank you. Our next candidate to respond will be Ms. Eva Alejandro.
What was your name?
Jorge Luis Montalas.
Jorge Luis. First of all, there's nothing wrong with Bs and Cs, okay? So don't put yourself down. But yes, I think that maybe we need to look at criteria, because normally, they look for top students, that kind of thing. But I think that sometimes, it's not the student himself or herself, I think that one of the things that I would like to start looking is at teaching, the way we present our courses. We all learn differently, and so that might be the case in your case. Through my alternative certification program, through the years, we have changed our style of teaching to meet the needs of students, so that maybe you can bring up your GPA, or maybe you can start making your As, you know. So sometimes, it's not so much the student himself, it's the way the teachers present the material. And we're dealing with a lot right now. We're having to compete with technology, you know, the, all the devices, so that as a classroom teacher, we can no longer lecture for three hours and hope that the student will pick up the content. So that's maybe one of the things that we need to start looking at. But yes, we'll definitely work with the rest of the board and see what's out there, and maybe a criteria needs to be changed a little bit. Thank you for your question.
Thank you. Our last candidate to respond will be Mr. J.J. De Leon.
So I was also a part-time student, so there's nothing wrong with that. I think that there is opportunities out there, I know that some of them don't just depend on GPA. Some of them, you would have to do a writing essay to give you a scholarship, but I don't know if you've found any of those, but that's something that maybe we can tap into, and your, what is it, your counselor would be able to assist you with that, you know, we can work with them, make sure that the information is out there for you as a student, because there are other opportunities that we can tap into, not just based on your GPA. I mean, you can write an essay, and you can get scholarships for that reason. So it's something that we can look into and try to help you, or any student that needs assistance with that. So yeah, most definitely, we want to work with you, make sure that you can get those monies, so that assists you with that. Thanks.
Thank you for your responses. We have time for one more question, and we will go ahead and bring it back to the other side.
Hello, my name is Itza Martinez, and as Ms. Alejandro has recently stated, experience is key in leadership, of course. So can you please discuss a time, either in the past as a student, when your leadership role impacted your organization, your club, your group?
We will go ahead and start this question with Mr. J.J. De Leon.
So, like I said before, the important part for me, when I became very intrigued with education, was when I was a student at UTB TSC, going out and recruiting students, talking to them, and talking about my troubles and tribulations compared to their troubles and tribulations, that there's always hope out there, that if we are interested in reaching our goal, that's a major possibility for everybody. It was for me. So, education has played a major part in my role. I started from the bottom all the way to the top, with bumps in the road, nothing's ever easy. I have had great leaderships, great people to mentor me, so most definitely, it plays a big part in who we become, but if we stay focused, that is always a reachable possibility for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate to respond will be Dr. Renaldo Garcia.
Can you please repeat that question?
Can you discuss your leadership role as a student, either in the past, if you could recall, you're a president of a certain organization and the impact you made in that organization?
Yes, that's right. When I was at TSC, I was a pre-dental student, so it was considered in the medical profession, and I was chosen president of a gorgeous pre-medical society for that length of time that I was in the college here, and that gave me a lot of experience and confidence and to be able to lead, and that gives you a sort of a leadership role or a sense of accomplishment. So yes, I was very active, I was, when I was in college, I was, it was not as big as it is now, but I was also the freshman treasurer, and I was chosen freshman favorite, things like that. So yes, no, I think those things are important, and it's good for students to get involved and try to achieve some sort of leadership in some organizations. There are several organizations in the colleges that they can belong to, like the one that set up this forum, for one thing, that's a good one, so.
Thank you. Our next candidate to address the question will be Mr. Carlos Rios.
Okay, so you asked about experience in the involvement in the courses, in the college, the university. Now, I myself, I have never been a part of a specific group or organization regarding the college level. Now, when I was 15 years old, I joined this group called a fraternity, it was called Demolé, and what we did, we basically raised funds for the community where we saw that the community needed. Those funds, such as somebody dealing with health issues, or somebody's house that had burned down, for an example, we would do anything from picking up trash at the beach to selling chicken plates, and it got, I got to the point where my leadership carried on, I got involved, I became the president of the organization. So from picking up trash to seeking out donations as a 401K, a nonprofit organization, those, being in that entity gave me the ability to have the leadership skills, to not be afraid to go talk to people, not be afraid to take risks, such as the risk that I am taking right now. I am young, I do have a lot of experience to gain, I do have a lot to learn, but I am willing to do so. And I've been, since I was nine years old, I would go to the flea market with my dad and sew shirts, stuff like that. So you learn to loosen yourself up, you learn to talk to people, you learn not to be afraid, you learn that at the end of the day, we're all skin and bones, and we all wish the best for each other. So that's how I feel. My experience has created leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last candidate to address the question- Our last candidate to address the question will be Ms. Eva Alejandro.
In high school, I was involved with the Senate President and all those good things, it's been too many years, so I can't remember exactly, but at the B County College that I attended, I was also involved with the student government. When I went to Texas Women's University, I was part of a group that fought and were able to attend, or able to obtain some courses dealing with minorities in Denton. And then, of course, as owner of A-Stop, I have run this, managed this business and have had several employees that work under me or for me, but everything that I've done, I think as, at the college level and at the, oh, and back at UTB, I was faculty chair, but everything that I've done, even now in my business, it's all about students. It's what's best for our clients, which are the students, and with that in mind, our courses are set up, and everything is done around what the students need.
Thank you. To end, that is the last question, we are, we are out of time for the question and answer portion, so to end our forum, each candidate will have two minutes for their closing statements, and we will begin with our first candidate, Mr. Carlos Rios.
I want to thank you all for being here and being involved, involvement is something that we need a lot, in the primaries, we had 12,000 people that came out and vote, and voted, which is ridiculous. People should be more engaged in the community, such as you are being engaged right now, that's something that's very important. We should focus on, on security. As was mentioned, the Texas Southmost College enrollment is growing, right now we're over 6, 6,700 students, we need to ensure that we can, we, we need to ensure that we have their safety in mind, we need to ensure that we have their health in mind as well, we need to establish a health clinic, we need to pay more attention to the auto body, the auto mechanic shop, when they ask us to change a sign. I went and I, I've spoken to different people there who tell me that sometimes people just stop by and thinking that it's actually a shop, when it's not, it's for the students, and not only that, we need to focus on tailoring our educational programs to the workforce that we have, so that in that manner, we can stop outsourcing jobs. That's a big thing for me, because I believe if we educate our own people, they'll find jobs locally, and we'll stop being the, the highest in poverty levels and the least educated. So I do ask for your vote, I ask for your support, I ask for your trust, more than anything, I ask for you to continue to be involved in our community. It is vital, it is important, from the grants we receive from the state to the, the taxes we pay here locally, it's important that everybody becomes involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rios. Our next candidate is Dr. Ronaldo Garcia.
Thank you again for your forum and for showing your interest in this forum that we're having today. All I ask is, you probably have already made up your minds who you're going to vote for, even before the forum, all I ask is you consider experience and professionalism to continue to lead our students to successful and rewarding careers. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia. Our next candidate is Mr. J.J. De Leon Jr.
I want to ask for your vote, a vote for an alliance to become a, a voice for students in our community college. I want to become that board member that has transparency and accountability. I want to, I want for you to know that I'm here to work for you, the students, the community. Thank you for the board members that show up, the president of TSC, appreciate this time that you've given us. Thank you so much, and I hope that I can count on your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. De Leon. Our last candidate is Ms. Eva Alejandro.
You always slip it to the last. The best for last, right? Thank you again for having us. TSC is dear to my heart. I started in Brownsville when 40-some years ago, and, with a public school, but I feel that, that now it's time to give back to my community, this is home. TSC, I feel, gave me my first opportunity by allowing me to put in writing to the agent, to TEA, what I thought was best for, for young children, and in obtaining that program, I feel that, that we've done wonders, because the, our children need that foundation as, as babies. But two things that I want to focus on is, again, strengthening the programs, especially our vocational programs that we have, and adding to those programs. The other thing that I, that I want to focus on is our teaching methods, and if there's faculty out there, don't fret. I'm all for academic freedom, I was at UTB for 20 years, and so I believe in academic freedom, but I think we need to look at our teaching methods to meet, to better meet the needs of the students. I think that students learn differently now, and so I think that, that we have, we as educators need to provide the, the right opportunities so that the students can obtain that information that they need, so that they, they can go out and succeed, because they are our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alejandro. Ladies and gentlemen, our TSC trustee candidate's open forum has come to the end. We would like to thank everyone who attended. Once again, we would like to say thank you to the candidates for joining us and taking the time to meet with our TSC family. As a reminder, early voting begins April 23rd to May 1st, and Election Day is May 5th. Good luck to all the candidates, and thank you all so, so much for joining us, have a nice day.[1797.58][1797.58]